Okay, you can begin. Three, two, one.
Good afternoon to everyone. At this time, I would like to call the CPS Energy Board of Trustees meeting to be held on March 29, 2021 at 1:00 p.m. to order. Ms. Shelman, could you please confirm the call?
Yes, sir. Mr. Steen?
President.
President.
Ms. Gonzalez?
President.
Mr. Kelly?
President.
Mayor Nuremberg? And Dr. Mackey. Dr. Mackey, I know you're there, so we do have a forum and you are free to proceed.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Taylor.
Thank you, Chair Dr. Mackey. Good afternoon. My name is Taylor. The CPS Energy Board of Trustees thanks you for joining. It's March 29th, regular board meeting by teleconference. The board is always interested in hearing public input. So if you have pre-registered to speak during the public comment portion of the agenda, please press zero on your phone keypad now to speak. Put in the queue to speak. A member of our staff will take your name. And when you hear me say your name, your line will open and you will have two minutes to speak. And you will hear a chime sound to indicate you have 10 seconds remaining to speak. Again, if you successfully pre-registered to speak, please press zero on your phone keypad now to be put in the queue. As a reminder for all who speak during this meeting, please remember to identify yourself before speaking. And I will now turn the meeting back over to Chair Dr. Mackey.
Okay. At this time, I would like to... Is the mayor... Is the mayor... The mayor on the line yet? Okay. Since the mayor is not on the line, then we'll turn it over to Ms. Paula Gold Williams for our safety message.
Thank you very much, Chair Dr. Mackey and the entire CPS Energy Board and all of the individuals who are tuning in and joining us here at CPS Energy today. I am going to make my comments brief. We have had, of course, a very devastating beginning of the year with Storm Yuri. We are continuing to study and look at all the improvements that we may need to make locally and contribute to at the state level. And we are actively participating legislatively in regulatory fashion, looking at negotiation and using our other avenues. But that does not negate the fact that we are still working through the pandemic. We continue to stay steadfast in our practices and our approach. We continue to practice active physical distancing. We are very excited by the fact that tests are now available to just about every age group. There is a challenge with supply. We continue to work with different entities to see if we can get actual vaccinations done on-site, and that's still an opportunity for us. But we are beginning to see a lot of openings that are coming locally, and we are very hopeful that the vaccine supply will level out in San Antonio. So that is very important to us. That said, we have reached a level of 477 actual total cases. And that's since the inception. We have a lower amount of individuals in quarantine. We have under 60 people in quarantine, and that's one of the more positive trends that we've seen in a long time, especially relative to quarantine. We are happy that we have no one in the hospital. And in general, I think, other than the fatigue of continuing to have to focus on these special items because of the pandemic, I think the team is doing well. They are... There's a lot of great conversations. We're getting tremendous support from our union leadership, both IBEW and NAPE. Both organizations are actively leading with management, again, to figure out the best ways to protect our employees and how to protect the public as we interact with them every day. And sure, that is the end of my update.
Okay. I know... At this time, I know the mayor has joined us. And Mayor, would you please, at this time, give us your safety message?
Sure. Good afternoon, everyone. And sorry for joining just a bit late. I'll give just a very brief update on our COVID situation, which has continued to improve over the last month or so. We are going to report again today that our positivity rate is still moving in the right direction. We are now just around 2% positivity rate. We have seen a considerable number of folks starting access to their vaccines. We have now over a quarter million people in the Barrett County area that have been fully vaccinated and nearing half a million people that have had one dose by now, which is all good news. Our hospitalization rate has dropped off dramatically, and that has consistently stayed down over the last six weeks or so. So everything is moving in the right direction. I will say that we are trying to be extra cautious and urging people, again, to continue with the mask-wearing and social distancing. We are entering a period of a week or two in which we're going to start to see the impacts of spring break and the end of the mask... The state mask mandate. And if there are impacts that are... That come as a result of that, we're going to see them over the next two weeks. So it's critically important that we continue to do our part with regard to the health precautions, and so you'll continue to hear our message about that. I do want to take an opportunity and just thank everyone for their active cooperation as we've been working to get more vaccines in our community. This is a very decentralized distribution process from the federal and state level down to the local communities. We have dozens of providers, you know, from clinics and pharmacies to our mass vaccination sites, but they're working very hard to increase those supplies. I do want to also take a moment to recognize the fact that we are in another emergency with regard to blood in our city. Our supplies of all blood types are at critically low volumes, and that includes Typo, which is used in emergency situations. That has remained below a one-day supply over the last month. And so we need folks to step up if they can, to make an appointment to donate blood at the South Texas Blood and Tissue Center. They can go to southtexasblood.org or call University Health or join one of the blood drives that are going to be happening around town. But we desperately need blood donations at this time and as we have throughout the pandemic. So everything, again, continuing to trend well. We're not taking that for granted, so continue with your compliance with the safety protocols. Happy to take any questions, but I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor and the CEO for their safety message. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to the invocation, Ms. Amelia Batters.
Yes. Good afternoon. Let us pray. Lord, we come before you today and give you honor and praise. Thank you for every gift that you've given us. We thank you for the opportunity to gather together this day. We ask for your hand of blessing on today's meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. We ask that the discussions held today and the decisions made today would be guided by your wisdom and that our words and actions today would bring honor to you. Provide us the grace to navigate the challenges before us and serve our customers well. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you for that invocation there, Ms. Batters. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Taylor for the public comments.
Thank you. The next agenda item is public comment, which provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on any of this meeting's posted agenda items. As a reminder, if you are a pre-registered speaker and you have not already done so, please press zero on your phone keypad right now so you can be put in the queue to speak. So here's how that process will work. We will invite pre-registered speakers to speak in the order in which they have registered. Speakers should state their first and last name, what organization or group they represent, if applicable, and indicate the agenda item number they are going to speak about. And for this meeting, we do have three registered speakers who will each have two minutes to speak. Speakers will hear a chime sound when 10 seconds remain, just reminding them to wrap up their comments. And our first speaker is Richard Perez, followed by Lexi Garcia. And hearing none, our next speaker is going to be Lexi Garcia, followed by Rachel Rabbani. And hearing no comment, our next speaker is Rachel Rabbani.
Hello, everyone. So as mentioned, my name is Rachel Rabbani. I'm just a concerned citizen of San Antonio, a daughter, a wife, a sister, an aunt, and potentially a future mother. And I just want to say and remind the board that as people in positions of power, you have a moral obligation to shut down the Spruce Coal Plant and transition to renewable energy as soon as possible. I'd also like to invite the entire board to my home, where you can look at my three-year-olds and seven-year-old nephews in the eye and explain to them why you put CPS's short-term profits above their air, their water, and their future. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was our last registered speaker. I will now turn the meeting back to Chair Dr. Mackey.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Taylor. I do have a few comments over certain topics that I like to, you know, express with our board and our leadership team concerning disconnects. You know, want to know, you know, one of the board members I know... I just read Paula's brief little CEO's report, and I know it covers that in there, but I'd like to hear more from the board on the disconnects. And discussing the depth of the issues and as CPS present a variety of strategies beyond REIT to address the needs of those families who will not be able to pay their bills. And that's number one. You know, board would like to discuss that. And the other one is the concern, the resource planning and flex path bundle. I know Ms. Gold Williams has that in hers, in her report, so I know we're going to discuss that further. Number three is the emergency response learning and action plan. During the storm, CPS seems to struggle with striking the right tone with the public and maintaining trust in the institution. And, you know, want to discuss some things that I think that are very important in that aspect. And number one is reviewing with the public and knowing that our planned maintenance on all generation units occurred during off-peak April, May, October. I know Ms. Gold Williams has that in her report. Then I want to discuss adding back fuel and storage for the gas-fired generation unit located within the D-rate capacity to run continuously for a minimum of 10 days. You know, when the storm came, we had to pay this extra fee because we did not have a storage. I want to look at that. I saw that she had that in her report. So I want to move forward with even the natural gas storage in Salt Domes location. Ms. Gold Williams is going to discuss that. I saw that in her report. Weather rise, winterize freezing protection, key gas generation unit components. I'm talking about piping, pumps, valves, and metering equipment. What are we doing to winter weatherize that? I didn't see that in her report, but I'd like to make sure that because of the 2011 report and what has transpired back then and what has transpired in April, not in April, in February, that we're not waiting for winter to come before we start thinking about these items, that we need to see a miss report each month describing things that we're doing to winter weatherize freezing so that this will never happen again, what happened in February. So I want them to... I want the board to look at some discussion in that right there aspect. And number five, just in case you need to rotate outage at the retail level, ensure that the distribution system engineers and control center dispatch complete an inventory of all distribution circuit feeders to know which one to rotate in essence with and timing to restore and keep stalls, NASA, hospitals, and et cetera in place. And I know Ms. Gold Williams is going to further explain that. But these are the five topics that I like for the board to, you know, as a board that we stay on top of and not wait till February of 2022 and say, this happened again, and what do we do? You know, I like for us to start thinking about and planning, planning what to do at this time to winter weatherize and freezing that this thing would never happen to us in San Antonio and that we can move forward. So that's the... These are some of my concerns. If any of the board would like to express any comments or concerns at this time, the floor is open for that. If not, we can hear the CEO's report, which covers the majority of these items that I just mentioned. And Ms. Gold Williams, could you please, at this time, discuss your CEO's report?
Yes, sir. Yes. Thank you very much for the opportunity to go over these items. These are, by far, some of the things that Chair Dr. Mackey, you have raised to me on several occasions. But also, like, these have been the questions that I have heard from the board in different conversations, as well as questions that we've gotten from council members, from other community leaders and customers. So we will gladly, as a team, take these items on as topics. And accordingly, I'm going to try to change my CEO's report to be more conversational, but also submit updates to the board in writing that go along with this. So I'm going to just have a general discussion, but the report is available and it will be posted on the website after today's meeting so that the general public can also go back and look at it and follow along our progress. So I will try to cover everything in the report, but I'm going to jump a bit because the question that you started with, Chair Dr. Mackey, was disconnects, which continue to be, of course, a huge interest for our customers. On the report is, in fact, it's actually on page 12 of 12. But the update there is we are now hitting about one year, our one-year anniversary of not doing disconnects. And we did that to take the stress away from the community and have done it broadly. Most customers are able to pay and pay, but there are quite a few customers in our community that have experienced additional hardships because of the pandemic. Quite a few utilities across the nation have also suspended disconnects. Some have restarted those disconnects. We understand that the demographics of our community have been more challenging, and we had many challenges before the pandemic happened. Our plan is to restart disconnects later this year. Our goal is to try to have the vaccinations more available and taking hold in the community. So as the community comes back and gets to the right balance of restarting the economy and people getting back to work, then we would correlate with restarting the disconnects at that time. In my mind, I think, again, as we updated in the early part of the safety message, it's going to take some time to get the vaccinations going. The supply has been slower than what I think all of us have wanted. But I would say by late spring to early summer, we will restart the disconnect process. And we will be very careful in that. We will be communicating. We committed to making sure that before that occurs, there'll be official notice of 30 days out telling the public and our customers that we will be starting. There were suspensions that happened as a result of winterstorm Yuri across Texas. We were already suspended, so we didn't have to do that. We are restarting our billing process. And I think because we held the billing process because of the storm so we could go back and make sure that none of the fuel costs are on the bill. This was all just about usage. There were people who ended up with bills that were lower than they expected because they were able to practice conservation and they were able to keep their temperatures cool. But there were some customers that still saw an increase, and that was because it was extremely cold, the coldest, longest period that we've had in our history. That said, our very good energy advisors are spending time explaining to customers what they are seeing, but we think it's going to take another, at least 30 days or so, for those billings to catch up and for us to get customers back in line. Even still, we can put customers on payment plans to help them through this tough process, which is happening at the same time that the pandemic process is happening, and help them all get back on their feet. We also have programs for contributions. We have an Energy Angels program, and we're really excited because some of the other customers in San Antonio are also helping their fellow San Antonians. So yes, we will start the disconnect process, but it will probably be later this summer or spring. Going back to some of the other comments that were asked, there was a question about the off-peak period, which currently, before Storm Yuri, the off-peak period ran all the way from October through May. But of course, what we've seen is that the winter intensity is getting intense, and we had the most intensive winter intensity this year with Winter Storm Yuri. What we have seen in the historical data is that the storm period that we've seen have been basically January and February and really haven't extended to December or extended into March. That said, we believe that the guidance will come from the state about what the exact period will be for the winter peak preparedness timeframe. We are generally, though, blocking for next year, the January and February timeframe. So summer peak happens from June through July. And then when we insert the two months of January and February, we basically end up with six months of peaking period that is split and about six months that is split over the fall and the spring that are non-peaking periods where we can do maintenance on all of our plants. We primarily have responsibility of 22 separate plants, fossil plants that we own, generation that we own, that we have to get all of the planned maintenance in and cover any unplanned maintenance. We also have STP, which we don't run that plant, and we don't have the operational, day-to-day responsibility. However, when that plant is not running and it's down for an outage, then we have to buy power from the market. So that said, we are going to adjust our process, and we're going to look for different ways to do outages. We typically have the ability to spread the outages over a longer period when it's, you know, eight months, when it's going to be chopped up like this. We are going to have to think more creatively about how to do the outages, and we're prepared to do that. We will have to buy more purchase power during those timeframes because they're going to be, you know, less open to us. So we... And we do expect that the outages will cost us some more money because we're going to have to hurry, go quicker, and incur both overtime and contracting costs. Those things we can plan for. We don't have estimates yet, but as we get them, we can explain that and share that with the board and the public. We also want to make sure that we don't go right up to the peaking period, so there's actually some windows. Maybe it's really the middle of December that we don't do any more planned maintenance. And we also don't do any planned maintenance from the beginning of the summer, like mid-May. So our team is already relooking at the whole planned maintenance schedule to make sure that we can try to accommodate that. And again, we'll get you more information. Relative to fuel oil storage, which is very helpful, fuel switching, the ability to, if you're in a natural gas plant, to go to fuel oil as an alternative is something that is really important, as Chair Dr. Mackey stressed, for us to look at expanding. We had actually reduced that strategy. Not every single one of our units can actually handle fuel switching. Matter of fact, what we have is we have four peaking units that generally can do fuel switching, but we're going to have to do some upgrades to that system. We actually have some storage. We're going to have to expand it. We want to go, as Dr. Mackey alludes to, that we need to go to a longer period. We have about three days of storage, and we should go to 10. The other units would have to be converted. And so we're going to... To be able to do that, we have to do modifications to the actual units themselves. We also have to expand the storage facilities. And for us to do that, we're going to have to invest in more inventories to carry that fuel oil. In some cases, the one thing to keep in mind from an environmental responsibility perspective, these are fossil plants. We can get them to where they're more lower emitting, but they're more emitting than some other technologies. Accordingly, we're going to have to get air permits. It'll be, I think, tougher to get an air permit on a unit that does not currently have one. We believe it'll be easier to get air permits on the ones that have them, but we need to modify them. So basically, we east the units five through eight. We think that's more about modification and hope that we can get that in a year or less. All the others could take up to two years, depending what's going on. Now, we will definitely reach out to the TCEQ to see if there are any streamlining that can happen, but that is going to be one of the long lead item things that we're going to have to do. And then when we try to go to more critical with mass, because the peaking units are only... They're less than 50 megawatts each, but we have eight of them. But when you want to go to a couple hundred of megawatts each and want to go to some of the other units, we're going to do studies and look at those. But we also need to look at the age of the units because depending on the investment, it may be very difficult to actually get that scheduled and make it a critical investment before those plants are to retire. But more information coming. We think it's a positive thing to do, and we will definitely analyze it. Natural gas storage, yes. Chair Dr. Mackey asked us to look at that. There are three types of natural gas storage abilities. There is oil and gas reservoirs. There's depleted aquifers. The reservoirs are also depleted. So there's basically caverns underground that can be reused for storage purposes. And then there are salt caverns. That said, the caverns that exist today aren't necessarily close to us, very, very close to us. A lot of them are on the coast and close to the Houston area. So we're trying to look and do with other inventories. Is there something else out there? If we need to build or create storage facilities, that's kind of a whole nother activity. But again, the board, you have asked us to look at this, and we will definitely get you more information from that perspective. We currently have about 5 billion cubic feet of natural gas currently that we store. We have three BCF in one location and two BCF in another. One of the additional challenges when you store is just because you have it in there, the actual storage companies, we're basically leasing the right to use those storage facilities and pull out, draw out, fuel. When we draw out that fuel, there have been limitations on how much you can draw out at one time, one to keep the cavern safe and one not to fully deplete all of the storage, the natural gas that's stored. We believe that if we wanted to get up to more of a 10-day storage realm, we're going to need about 12 billion cubic feet of natural gas. And we would prefer it to be in a salt dome. But we would also need a lot more ability to pull out large amounts of gas at one time. The levels that San Antonio hit during Winter Storm Yuri during the day were tremendous. And so again, we're looking into this, and we will bring back the board more information on it. The challenges that... Another challenge on this is that the lines that come to our plant are not necessarily our, you know, our... For our flow are necessarily connected to where the storage facilities are. So we do still need to talk about transport or, again, if we want to make major investments in our own transportation, large pipeline for it, we're going to have to figure out the cost of that and bring that back to the board. That all said, we have more evaluations to come. These are the high-level views. Freeze protection as another topic. We did do quite a bit of freeze protection. We did multiple engineering studies to look at everything that we needed to address in 2011, and we took and addressed all of those recommendations. However, again, we think we're going to have to have higher standards of freeze protection based upon what we saw in 2021. We believe a lot of this, again, will come from a state-level view, but we're going to also look at the things that we need to do. Once we get some more guidance from the state, or if the state does not come through, either way, we're going to engage another consultant to help us look at what we learned in 2020. We're gathering data and information, and one way or another, we'll have our own analysis if there is not guidance that comes from the state. We will also look at some other things. One of the challenges, and we've been studying this issue that happened during the Winter Storm Yuri, was that the utilities had struggles with generation, but there were also struggles with the natural gas supply system, as we've all talked about in many ways. But the standards... But the standards that they have versus the standards that we have, we're not currently sure that they have enough standards in terms of maintaining the supply system. So, we're looking into that with an advisor to help us look at what those standards are and gaps and perhaps something that we can look at as we qualitatively work out of this period and look at better relationships and be able to evaluate our counterparties based upon how well they are prepared for emergencies like Winter Storm Yuri. We are also working with, reaching out on, to customers about what they can do. We need to, of course, reinvest in more, higher standards for our generating plants, but particularly if they're a large commercial or large industrial, we want to help them in terms of looking at their own backup systems, looking at different technologies to help them. This is one of the conversations we have started having with SaaS. They are very interested in kind of thinking about their own backup generation at certain critical locations and we think that a balance between what we can do and what large customers can do would be very, very helpful to San Antonio. That way, when a kilowatt hour of energy is produced, you know you can push it to the residents because CPS Energy and businesses are better prepared to be more self-sufficient. There was a question about how did the fuel oil perform? So, if we're looking for strategies that potentially could have us do fuel switching, how did they perform? Did we see the same increases particularly relative to price on fuel? And actually, we did not. The prices on the fuel oil side were very moderate and so there wasn't a huge increase there. Now, again, it's not as common, you know, there's our challenges from an environmental standpoint that we have to evaluate, but right now, if we can keep those environmental challenges under control, we did not see the price volatility and the ability for us to move back and forth between fuel should take pressure off pricing. Almost done. Yes, Chair Dr. Mackey, you have, you know, like many, that you have continued to focus on this outage management process. We are looking at the ability to readdress and restructure our outage management approach. We utilize a circuit management approach, which is pretty well typical for all utilities, especially large ones. The speed at which we have to move and the massive amount of megawatts we had to deliver typically indicates that we should be doing things in chunks. However, we all understand the complexity of having maybe a hospital or some other critical infrastructure on the circuit and not being able to rotate the outages for those other customers who are not critical. That would, of course, take pressure off the entire system and help us rotate better. So, we are looking at different opportunities. There isn't any easy off-the-shelf product that currently exists, but we are asking our trusted suppliers and we are looking and talking to research arms across the nation about what is out there and what we can do. We are looking at the opportunity to look at the AMI system. We will have to look at the security and the other aspects around how do you do that? That system was designed for a different purpose. So, all of those things are being actively with that at this time and again, we will bring you more information on that and how that could work with augmenting an approach on backup systems and resiliency. And relative to the Flex Power Bundle, because big picture, we still need to move away from some of the generating units that are aging, that are fossil plants, that are more emitting and we're just going to have to figure out how to continue to create Flex Power Bundles that will address both summer peak and the current one that we have is better matched for summer peak and we're going to have to look at winter peaks going forward. But we do have the current RFP closed. We are evaluating the different activities that are, that need to be done, the different options that we've seen. You will get an update today at the board meeting from Kevin Polo about what you see, but we will be tying again the lessons learned that we experienced from the Yuri storm into how do we look at new solutions for our generation planning. And sir, and the entire board, those are the highlights and the directions that we're going as we go forward. If you want to give us more input in between the meetings or have any question sessions, we're totally available for that.
Well, thank you, Ms. Gold-Williams, but one other, one other topic that I missed is the push for the virtual meeting. When we're going, we've been doing virtual meeting, I guess, since last March, last March. I noticed that a lot of city councils, different other organizations are beginning to go back and have in-house meetings. So, that's something that we need to put on the, I guess, put on the board agendas and, you know, start doing that because in April, I would like to do my, you know, board chairmanship from the new building and checking everything that works. So, I'd like to hear from the other board members when we like to go back to the, in our regular board meetings. That's something that I see everybody's doing and I want, you know, want to hear from everybody because I'm ready to get back to business and doing our regular board meetings and see if that is acceptable to other board members. Okay, if I don't hear anything, then I'll put on the agenda.
Hello? Hello, this is Trustee Gonzalez. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
No, I'm definitely in favor of either A, instead of just telephone, you actually see us in person or video or meeting in person. So, I do support that recommendation for the spring.
Dr. Mackey, this is Trustee Kelly. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Kelly.
I also very much support the idea of getting back together as a board physically as soon as possible. I just, I think the interactions and the freer discussion of a actual board meeting is much more productive. So, I very much support that idea as soon as reasonably possible.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, and thank you.
Dr. Mackey, this is Carolyn. Excuse me just a minute. This is such an important topic. I just want to remind the board that we have to be careful, as routine as this seems, to not start a discussion and end up having a vote on something that we haven't noticed for public discussion. That does not mean that the board has to vote to have a meeting back in the headquarters building. So, that's something that I think the chair and the CEO can plan, but we really can't be in a position of voting on something like that today.
Yes, no, we're not going to vote on it today. We just, I just kind of wanted to hear their comment on where they're at on it, their interest level on that, but I understand and thank you again, Michelle. We'll all get with the CEO and then we'll notify the other board members on that. Thank you for the comments on that right there. All right.
Chair, Chair Mackey?
Yes.
This is, this is Ron. I would concur. I think it would be much better if we, and I think the data will indicate that we can conduct that safely even if we have an overflow area for folks who might attend the meeting. Is this now a time for me to comment on the CEO report as well?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Sure, and thank you very much, Paula, for the presentation. Just a couple reactions to some of the things that I heard. I want to thank the, you know, the folks of the organization for continuing to share data about customers who have found themselves in arrears throughout this pandemic. We've been working together as a city and a county to find and implement relief measures and certainly having the disconnects no longer part of that challenge has been helpful for a lot of people. So, understanding the depth of that impact is going to be important. I will say, I'm not quite clear on the vaccination, how that will impact if at all. I don't see that the vaccination process has an immediate impact on the financial realities that so many of our residents are struggling with right now. San Antonio, the city, continues to offer utility assistance through our Emergency Housing Assistance Program. And I do appreciate, again, Paula, that you and your team have shared that one of the solutions to our bigger situation here with the utility is REAP. I'm glad to hear about the activity from our residents, helping other residents to the Energy Angels program as well. However, I'd like to ask Chair Mackey, if we as a board can have a data-driven discussion sometime soon in the next meeting or two about what's possible when it comes to addressing or resuming disconnects in our community before we put that out there as a date certain? I mean, I think that the trustees need some space to comprehensively discuss the depth of this issue and also see our organization present some strategies beyond REAP to address the needs of the families in need. I appreciate the fact that we've, throughout this pandemic, every organization has been trying to lead with compassion. CPS is no different and I want to make sure that we don't finalize or communicate any firm deadlines about resuming disconnects in the meantime or that no one interprets it that way as well. So, if we can have that discussion near term, Dr. Mackey, I'd appreciate that. The only other thing I'd say with regard to what we just heard is I'm looking at, this is just now beginning a discussion about our backup fuel process and how we are going to utilize dual fuel reserves. Obviously, we don't want to take steps backward environmentally and so I would like for us to have a thorough discussion of this. And I also think as we begin to implement other enhancements to our process, including the rate advisory committee talking about generation capacity is one of their charges. So, I do think that this is a discussion that needs to be studied in the RAC before any firm decision is made and I would ask that we, you know, keep that in mind as we move forward. I know there's a RAC presentation update today as well. So, these are big decisions and I want to make sure that we are utilizing the entities that we're creating to help us through comprehensively. So, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor Nureberg. Any other comments?
Yes, this is Trustee Gonzalez. Along the lines of what the mayor has expressed, I would say that I think that's one of my suggestions or concerns. We have the disconnect that happened pre-Winter Storm. We have now costs associated with that. We have RAC. We have several key initiatives simultaneously of concern that need implementation and need more thorough review and insight. So, there's a cost to everything and so I'm very concerned about costs, not only to our organization, but also to citizens. And I strongly feel the need for more of a comprehensive planning session with the mayor and the board to really get a feel for how we plan to navigate, you know, the complexity of what we face. I, again, am very mindful that there's a cost to everything. There's also a cost to inaction, whether it's environmental, whether it's financial and the event really just kind of threw a wrench in everything that we're working on to be proactive in very key areas, whether it's environment or alternative energy sources. And so, with that being said, I'm hoping that we could have an off-site, you know, risk management meeting to kind of just get more, an opportunity to kind of just, again, as a team, to really, really dissect a little bit further and then of course, knowing that this is agile and it's a very fluid situation, that we just have a better, it's not even the word feel, but a more concrete, you know, path moving forward. Again, we're dealing with RAC, Flex Plan, understanding what took place, analyzing that, you know, in addition to, you know, the climate action plan ready. I mean, there's just so many things and so I know everybody's trying to do the right things. I just, again, feel a need for something a little bit more robust for us to get a better handle on things. That concludes my statement.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Do we have any other comments? Okay, if there's no other comments, let's move to item number six, Board Operating Procedures. And then item number six is Board Operating Procedures and that's something that I put on the agenda, Rules of Order for the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. And I think we've given this to all board members. There's only one thing that I changed that was, that was different in what I recommended to put on this. If you look at Article Four, the board meeting, including topics, it was, at first, I looked at one trustee may jointly, may request an item and then before we put it out, I put two trustees request, put an item on agenda for upcoming meetings by submitting written requests and then, and then the other, and then move, and then scratch, scratching out, line through, or discussing with the board chair, because two board members cannot discuss with the board chair. That constitutes a quorum and we can't do that. So, two board members and item is presented at least 20 days ahead of time and it's written with other leadership support and help. So, if we could look at that right there and put in a period after request and I know that any board member can call the chair at any time and request, even though the chair can not put it on the agenda, but if two board members do it, then it automatically goes on the agenda. Then I think we've had this and it's about seven, about nine pages. And before we discuss the item, I know I asked you all to look at that, Article Four, Four A, I would like to get a motion on the table. Do we have a motion on the table for the Board Operating Procedures? If not, I would like to make a motion to approve the Board Operating Procedures. Do we have a sucker?
I'll second that, Trustee.
Okay, we have a motion by Willis Mackey. We have a sucker by Janie Gonzalez. Do we have any discussion or comments?
Dr. Mackey, I do have a question on, this is Trustee Kelly. On Four A, it talks about any two trustees may jointly request that item be included on the agenda. Is request, in your mind, the same as demand? What happens if I request, but it's not considered something that the chair or somebody else would prefer not to put? I need clarification of the word request.
Okay, that's a good question. Why don't we just put demand? Demand for request, that works for me.
Well, I'm throwing that out for a discussion. I just want to make sure that there's agreement on the concept because the word request left me with the understanding that you could request it, but it doesn't necessarily have to happen. Demand is a pretty strong word for that. So, I'm just curious what the others think about that.
Yeah, we can use the verb, we can accept it, we can, you know, that it automatically, when two board members get together, every board I've been a part of, it's always when two board members can put an item on the agenda. So, I was just trying to figure out a way to do that. It doesn't have to be, like you say, it's kind of strong demand, but we can put accept, except on the, use some other terms. Ms., do we have the attorney? What other word can we use in there that two board members can accept, Ms. Sheldon?
Yes, Dr. Mackey, let me make one further comment and I'll come up with some language for you, but I think that the question that Mr. Kelly has raised, raises an issue that still exists under the Open Meetings Act with respect to this provision. I think that under the Open Meetings Act, any kind of an exchange, whether it's verbal or written, between a quorum of the board members constitutes a deliberation that has to be done in open session, in an open meeting. And so, what you have here, if you have two trustees, if they get together and they say, this is what we want on the board agenda and it goes to the board chair, the board chair technically can't respond.
It doesn't go to the board. It goes strictly to the CEO to put on there. Because you're right.
Okay.
Cannot go to them because that constitutes a quorum, but because it's automatically put on there, you override the chair. You don't have to go- You don't have to go to the chair. You can.
Okay. Okay, well then.
Dr. Mackey, this is, uh, this is Ron. If I could offer a suggestion?
Yes.
I mean, I think, uh, using the word demand implies that there's some adversarial, um, uh, issue happening. I certainly wouldn't want to imply that if it's unnecessary. Why don't we just put something to the effect of, uh, two board members, uh, two members of the board can place an item on the agenda by written request.
Okay.
Written request to the CEO, correct? Based on what, uh?
Yes.
Parallellous data.
Correct, yeah. To, um, the, it says here, um...
The CEO to place on the formal agenda, I believe that's.
Yeah, that'll work.
The intent.
Right.
Um, uh, this is, uh, John Stein. Um, I'm, uh, in the first place, um, I think our current, and, and I, I've, I've read through these rules of order and for the most part, they're fine. Uh, what I'm focusing on is article four, paragraphs A through C. And, um, our, our current practice is it takes only one trustee to do this. And, and, and this has seemed to work fine. And I can reflect that when I was chair, I can't recall a single time I turned down a request from a colleague to place an item on the agenda. So my question for Dr. Mackey is why are we raising the bar? Why are we making it more laborious and difficult for an individual trustee to place an item on the agenda? And just to remember, after all, there are only five of us. And, and when I say laborious, let me expound on that a little bit. I've, I won't name the trustees, but there are trustees on this call that because of circumstances called me pretty close to a meeting with, with an important item that they wanted placed on the agenda. Uh, in most instances, we were able to accommodate that. Sometimes it was just flat too late to do it, but that's just the way life is. Sometimes things come up at the last minute. So, Dr. Mackey, what you're doing in these, uh, in, in these rules is you're saying it has, that has to be done at least 20 days prior to the board meeting. And so I just ask the trustees that are, that I'm referring to, you know what I'm talking about. Do you really want to implement? Why are we doing this? Why are we implementing something that's put this, puts this 20-day requirement into place, uh, recognizing that that's not really how the world works a lot of times?
Well, you finished, Mr. Stein?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Well, I want to thank you. That's a good question. Uh, there was a couple of times in my three years that I've asked for an item, uh, you know, wanted to, I didn't demand it or ask, and but I was looking at item be on the agenda. And, uh, uh, because I, I was concerned about something and wanted to discuss that. But I guess I didn't make myself clear enough on that. But I think good system processes, structure, better communication and transition, I think these are things that, that we can say. And I, and I appreciate the 20 days, uh, because I, I can tell you, since being the chair, you know, sometimes this last minute thing that are put on the agenda is, is very confusing when, when staff is trying to help out, when they don't, they're getting confused about things. I think we put a lot of confusion on the staff when we rushing things to put on the agenda. I've, I've seen that happen. And I'm trying to give staff a time to make sure that they, if they don't put it on there, we put it on there, they got a chance to digest the concept, digest it, uh, able to help and support, uh, the items that trustees are putting on, so we can, we can move forward. Uh, you know, there are some things that I, I wanted to put on the agenda that, that, uh, that I.
No, Dr. Mackey, I wasn't referring to you, and I'll go ahead and say it. The person I, it comes to mind is you, Mayor. There, there are things that have come up that, uh, that are pretty important, that you've wanted to place on the agenda. If, if these rules were in place, you couldn't do it, um, uh, except 20 days out. That seems unduly restricted to me. And I don't know why we're restricting ourselves in this way. And again, I'm not focusing on the other articles. I'm, I'm focusing on article, and not even all, all of article four, just article four, paragraphs A through C. I just wonder why, why we're, what's the reason we're imposing our restriction? And sure, Dr. Mackey, sometimes the staff has to, uh, to, to, in a sense scramble, and but they've always been successful at doing it. And I don't, uh, I, I, I don't think that that ought to be the primary consideration.
May I ask a question? This, this is Ron. Um, the way I read it, and maybe I'm reading it wrong, um, this does not, uh, exclude the opportunity for the chair to place anything on the agenda, um, so long as it's compliant with the Texas Open Meetings Act. So, um, Chair Mackey, if, if there was an emergency issue or something that falls less than emergency, but, you know, it's four days before the, the meeting and, and we need to have something posted and, and a trustee approached you and you agreed, you would still be able to place that item on the agenda. Um, in my view, and the way I'm reading this, is that if there is, um, uh, if there is an issue, uh, that needs to be addressed and it, and it's not sufficiently, uh, critical, um, according to the chair, uh, the trustees may disagree with that assessment and, um, present in writing, uh, via two of the trustees, uh, placing that on the agenda. But there is always an opportunity outside of, uh, the three-day Texas Open Meetings Act, um, window to place something on the agenda, uh, should the chair do that, decide to do that.
Mayor, Mayor, I don't think, I, this is John Stein. No, I don't, I, I think we're laying out rules of order. So if that situation comes up and you put the chair in the position of whether he's going to violate his own rules of order, but by allowing that at the last minute, that's the way I would view it, the way it's written.
I, I don't see, I don't see in, in this, uh, article four, A through, uh, H, anything that modifies, uh, state statute regarding Texas Open Meetings Act.
To, to the mayor's point, this is, uh, the CEO, Paula. Um, to the mayor's point, we could add a clarification that, that the board has that option when there is an emergency item.
I think that's a good suggestion, Paula.
Yes, ma'am. And then we can do, we can do it both ways, just be more organized, um, than we've done before. Time is so critical now. The structure would help management, but we would definitely accommodate anything that the board wanted, as we normally would. Just more planning for us would be helpful. We're trying to get in front of our, our topics.
Yeah. Well, I'm going to say, I think, I think that there's been a motion second on, on these rules as written, and yet I, I'm still at a position of being a little bit confused about what we're voting on. In other words, the wording of paragraph A, now we're talking about adding another sentence that would be an exception to the 20-day requirement. So, um, I'm not inclined to, to vote in favor of it today, if that's what you all want to do. I think that, I think these rules need some more work.
You know, what would help me would be a red line of the changes or do, I, I don't have in front of me the existing, uh, rules. Uh, could, could we redline the changes that we're anticipating making so that somebody like myself can compare what we currently have versus what we're proposing?
Hey, sir, this is Paula Gold Williams. We don't have anything in writing is the real reason you don't have it. I think, I think that, uh, Chair Dr. Mackey, uh, wanted us to, to kind of think through that, because we've just kind of been doing it ad hoc, so there, there aren't existing ones to edit. We just have practices that we've been following, not.
So this is, this is a brand new document that we're looking at now.
Yes, sir.
Trustee Kelly, that was my point. Why are we, why are we making this cumbersome, when it seems to have worked fine in the past?
Uh, uh, well, I'll just.
Well, I guess what I'm understanding is that you're requesting, you want an updated process, correct? So we're voting on the updating process that you're recommending? And then our CEO and our, our mayor and our CEO have proposed language? And then trustee, uh, Mr. Kelly has requested it to be written, redlined, or just written for further comments by board of trustees before we officially vote, get it back to vote on? Is that correct?
I was assuming, uh, Trustee Gonzalez, that there was an existing policy?
I see.
And that this was, uh, proposed changes? And so I was, it would have helped me to see a red line of the changes. But if I understand the CEO, it has not been a written policy in the past. It has just been a practice that she is now trying to, uh, convert to a written policy, if I'm hearing you're correct.
Okay. Can I interrupt you? Uh, the CEO has nothing to do with this. This was, uh, Willis Mackey, uh, putting this together for this reason. When you come in as a chair and, and you're trying to figure out, and you ask, uh, your attorney, what are the procedures in this? And, well, Dr. Mackey, we don't have, we have practices, but we don't have procedures. Uh, uh, we don't have this in, you know, document, but we've normally done it this way. I was just trying to bring clarity so that, that we all know from now on, what is the, you know, we all have a, 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 a new, a policy. This is brand new, uh, that we have in place, that we all know what's going on and we all on board with it. Uh, Ms. Gold Williams has nothing to do with this, has no idea I was doing it until I called her and put on it. So this, this has nothing to do with it. This is Willis Mackey trying to put some things in place, because new board members or new chairs just know the procedures. You know, because when you ask questions, no one knows. And I really didn't get a lot of help on this. I'm just being honest with you. I got no, I just, I got, I got questions and bits and pieces, but I, I wouldn't want anybody else to go through what I went through. I want to make it clear. Uh, uh, I want to make it clear, it is a problem. And I want to make the good system, the process, the structure, and some communication that's not existing. And I want to make it very clear in what we do. So when we visit with our staff and, and, and things are coming in, I can't wait till the weekend, like Saturday and Sunday, I send my Saturday and Sunday organizing it. That's good. But if I had Thursday and Friday, why I had four days to get this done by Wednesday afternoon, I got Thursday and Friday to review the agenda while the staff is at work and not inconveniencing them while they're at home and they're saying, why are we doing this and all of this kind of stuff? I have two days. This means a lot for structure and organization. Some people may can do all of this without it, but I like a little structure and organization. And so this is brand new for me, so I can, so we can have something to follow and I can better understand and better accommodate board members and, and CPS leadership team to move forward. This is, this is what this is about. If nothing exists, for a $12 billion business, to not have some procedures to go through, I'm just a little confused about this. Uh, because some people may can just say, hey, we've done this for this long, but when you ask questions and you're getting two different answers, you want to say, wait a minute, why can't we just follow a little something? And, and this, and it just confuses me when, when structure is not in place. It, you know, I, I'm questioning it. Everybody wants some structure, a little organization. So that's, this is what I, this is what I ask for, to just give, just things that people talk about, say we have practice, and I keep asking, well, we practiced this. I just went ahead and asked to put in writing, so we can follow our practice. It's documented and there's no excuse to go back and say, oh, I didn't know that. We all know if it's in writing. You know, even though I put, I'm, I'm acceptable for any changes or little things like this that we can do. I just thought it was up for, you know, we need to discuss how are we going to move forward with this right here? That's all I ask.
Who actually drafted it, Dr. Mackey?
Uh, I, I asked Ms. Emma Hand of the DIN Group to, to help me. I told her what I wanted in there and she helped me draft this.
Well, Dr. Mackey, where is she located? Where does she, uh, practice out of?
She, she works for the DIN Group for Clint, uh, what's it, uh, Clint Benz.
Yeah, out of Washington.
She's going to be on the phone with us today, because Clint Benz can't be here. So she's going to be with us today.
But she's out of Washington, is that right?
Yes, yes. I, I guess, I can't tell you what she's out of.
Okay. Well, again, I think there were some issues with the Open Meetings Act that I think we've cleared up. And to be clear, Dr. Mackey, I think what you're doing, uh, in articles one, two, everything except article four is just pretty, pretty much putting down what we've been doing, which is fine. You're changing, uh, the procedures in article four. You're making them more cumbersome. I'm not sure I'm in favor of that. But I do like the changes that you've made. I do think that the adjustments you've made is really, uh, there were, it was problematic with the Open Meetings law, but you're making adjustments on that. Uh, I think, I think the 20 days, you've made the adjustment there. But frankly, I'm kind of confused on what I'm voting on. And it might be, it might be better, uh, to, to go ahead and, and get this thing redrafted and let's just vote on it, uh, next meeting, that would be my suggestion.
Let me ask, let me ask this question. If it was, instead of 20 days, if there was 15 days or something like that, would that make a difference?
Well, no, I think what, I think what we came up with was, uh, the, uh, yes, in ideal circumstances, it'd be 20 days, but we'd recognize in the rules, because we want to follow the rules, that there might be an exception to that, the type of thing that we were talking about with the mayor, when something comes up, it just can't be helped, but it's something that comes up and it's not, it's not 20 days out, it's something pretty close to the meeting. And by the way, that happens, not, not often, but it happens, it, it happens a pretty good amount of the time that we have to make last-minute adjustments. So that's, that we're going to, that we're going to contemplate that in the rules. Otherwise, Dr. Mackey, if that came in close to the meeting and you were following the rules, you'd have to say, I can't accept that, because I, because it's, it's within 20 days of the meeting.
Okay, now, that's only when two board members outside the chair. The chair can put something on there within the, the four days, business days, before the board meeting.
May I, may I offer a suggestion? Um, if, if that is the remaining issue, uh, and everything else looks, uh, pretty copacetic, um, we add an item here, or, uh, item I, um, that would say, at any time, uh, compliant with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the chair may place an item on the board of trustees' agenda.
Carolyn, can you provide feedback? Is that susceptible?
I think that would work. Uh, just so you all notice, if you will look in article, uh, four F, as in Frank, the emergency or urgent public matter provision is in there and correctly allows you to add something. But I think what you all are talking about is something that doesn't rise to the level of an emergency or urgent public matter, and what the mayor has suggested would work.
Okay, I think that's a good idea, add an I, any, at any time, the chair may place an item on the agenda, on the board agenda. I think that works.
Dr. Mackey, but you've made a motion on, on, on really, uh, on, I don't really know what the correct language now is on our, by the way, we're taking a lot of time on this, and this is not something we have to do at today's meeting, but I'm just wondering if it would be the best practice to, to go back and, and have it redrafted with these changes that we've talked about and take it up at the next meeting. I'd be, I, with the changes we're talking about, I think if I can see them, uh, I, I might be fine with it. Otherwise, if, if you're going to push it to a vote today, I'd probably vote no, just because I'm not clear on what we're doing and, and, and what was in the book is not what we're voting for.
Well, what's in the book, and I, what I would like to do as a chair, I would like to move to amend the, to amend the motion that I made, add, I, item, item I, on four I, to amend, to amend it, that any time the chair may place an item on the board agenda. And I have to have a second on that.
I'll second that.
Okay, now we, now we can discuss item, item I. Any time the chair place an item on the board agenda.
I think it would be a good idea to use the language that the mayor suggested, at any time in compliance with the Open Meetings Act, the chair may place it. Just add that.
In compliance.
Mm-hmm. The Open Meetings Act.
Okay.
The chair may place an item on the agenda.
Okay.
And if it would be helpful, I could go back and read what I heard, the amendment that I heard you make to A. You want me to do that?
Please.
Okay, this is how I heard it. Um, at least 20 days prior to the board meeting, two members of the board may place an item on the agenda by written request to the CEO. on the agenda by written request to the CEO.
That's correct, Carolyn. So, um, I will, I would ask, uh, Dr. Mackey if he'd accept that amendment as a friendly amendment to the original motion.
I guess it technically would be on the agenda for an upcoming meeting by doing it. So, would you?
Dr. Mackey, are you agreeing with the original motion to the, for the whole of arti- Article Four? Uh, would you accept that language as a friendly amendment?
Repeat that again, Mayor?
Would you accept what Carolyn just said as a friendly amendment to, uh, your original motion?
Okay. Repeat that, Ms. Sheldon?
Yes, sir. At least 20 days prior to the board meeting, two members of the board may place an, an item on the agenda for an upcoming meeting by submitting a written request to the CEO.
Yes.
Why are you making the request for the CEO? I thought Dr. Mackey wanted like the strictly a chairman, uh, set of rules.
You, you, you can't make it straight to the CEO because there's two board members. It has to go, it, it can't go to the chairman. It has to go to the CEO.
So that you don't end up with your three, uh...
Yes, yes.
So that's the reason you're getting a CEO in the act?
Yes. And the CEO will notify the chair. You know, that's, but...
Let me ask another question, Carolyn, uh, and, and, Dr. Mackey, it sounds like you did get some expert opinion from the firm that you mentioned a while ago in putting this together.
Yes.
Um, would it, would it make sense to have that company or that firm give us a briefing before we vote on this as to their thought process and pulling this together? Uh, is this something fairly, um, routine in the, uh, industry? In other words, it, it would be some comfort to me, since this is a brand new document, to have an expert in the field say, yes, I drew this in conformity with blah, 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 including the Texas Open Meeting Act and, and other things. I don't know if that would add any value to the other trustees, uh, but it would to me. So it's just a idea. Uh, I know you're trying to get this passed today, and I'm not against that, but, um, being a brand new document, uh, I really thought that we had operating procedures and that we were talking about modifications here, but being a brand new document that now will become something, uh, of a legacy document at the company, it wouldn't be a bad idea to talk to the expert who put this together and got the reasoning process, uh, as to the different items included and why.
Okay. The only item that I changed on this was that four A, 'cause she had one trustee and I put two trustees for that reason. And it said, I, I know it brought a little complication to it, but if two trustees would like to put something on the agenda, then it doesn't have to, then it, it, then it could really go on the agenda without the chair, uh, preventing it from going on the agenda. And that's all I'm saying. I, I don't want to stop two board members if they got a, uh, a motion and a second from doing it. I was just thinking about, you know, something that, you know, to do that. I understand that right there. And I, I'm sitting here thinking because I did have, have a, 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 uh, an, an amendment to the motion there for item I before I. And I'm just sitting here thinking about that.
Dr. Mackey, this is John Steen again, and then I'll, then I'll, I'll be quiet and we'll just vote on it if that's what you want to do. But I, I, th- these are, these are rules of order. There's no reason we have to pass them today. It's, it, I'm confused about the changes that have been made, and I, I just think it'd be ni- it'd be nicer to clean all of this up, uh, continue to con- confer with our counsel on it and come back with, 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 with the actual copy, uh, at the next meeting and, uh, you know, we'd just be losing a month. I don't, unless you can articulate that to me, I don't know what, what we're losing by doing that anyway.
Uh, Mayor, you, you stuck in my, uh, my motion? Uh, is this something that, you know, it ain't, you know, I, I'm okay with it. If, if we have to come back next month and, and, and clean it up and get Ms., uh, what did I say, Emma Hand online to, to explain that, uh, what I asked her to do, then Mayor, is that okay with you if I do that?
Um, say it again, Dr. Mackey, I'm sorry.
Uh, is that okay if, if, if I can ask Ms. Emma Hand to come at the next board meeting and explain, um, and, and clear up some things on, on this rules of order that I've asked, that I've asked for? Because you're stuck in the motion, that's asking you.
That, that, that's fine with me. I'm, I, I'm fine either way. I will say this, what you put in writing here is, to me, uh, akin to putting two feet in your bicycle pedals, uh, if you just bought a bike. This is not hard stuff. This is pretty simple stuff. Um, we have spent far too much time on it, um, but I, I don't see any controversy with what you presented. If we need another month to go through it, uh, that's fine with me.
Well, I, 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 I don't see anything wrong with it. Uh, I, I, every organization I've been in, I, I went back, looked at books, I asked her why did we can't follow these? And she researched it. I told her, you know, these are things that I've pulled from different, uh, that, that I've had used in the past that just bring clarity and structure to our, our meetings. And I, I really want to vote on it, but...
Well, I don't see why, if, if, I don't understand why we can't vote on it based on Mayor's feedback and Carolyn's feedback.
We can. Why don't, I mean, I think that, let me just recite where I think we are. Dr. Mackey made a motion, Trustee Gonzalez seconded it, there was discussion, the mayor offered a friendly amendment to Dr. Mackey's motion, which Dr. Mackey accepted it. If there is a second to that motion as amended, then it is teed up for discussion and vote, and people can vote for it or not for it. So, uh, Dr. Mackey, why don't you see if there is a second for your motion as amended, uh, by the mayor?
The mayor seconded it. The mayor seconded it. Our motion, the mayor seconded it. Huh?
I, yeah, n- never mind. I believe you're correct. The mayor seconded it.
Ms. Gonzalez did the main motion, seconded it, and the mayor did the second motion. So, uh, to the amendment.
Okay.
So the amendment is on the table, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Sheldon, if we could go ahead and vote for the amendment motion?
Yes.
Yes, if you can call, call roll for the amendment motion.
I'll do that. Mr. Steen?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez? Mr. Kelly?
I abstained because I don't have enough information.
Mayor Nuremberg?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez, do you want to vote on this? Dr. Mackey, are you in favor? Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Okay. So we have, uh, one abstention, three in favor, and we've not heard from Ms. Gonzalez. So, um, the motion passes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, I meant to say yes. I, I thought I said yes and it was on mute.
Okay.
For the record, it's yes.
Okay. Thank you. The motion passes.
So, Ms...
Four in favor, one abstention.
So, Ms. Sheldon, could you do the main motion now?
Okay. Um, Mr. Steen?
I vote no, and, and I'll, uh, I've g- I've given my explanation. I'm not necessarily against it, but I think it's confusing.
Okay. Ms. Gonzalez? Mr. Kelly?
I abstained.
Uh, sure, um, sure, I'm sorry, I was on mute again. Yes, my vote is yes.
Okay, yes. Uh, Mayor Nuremberg?
Yes.
Yes. And Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Okay. So then, that motion, uh, passes as well. Three, uh, in favor, one abstention, one no.
Okay. Uh, thank you. And at this time, we'll move to the consent agenda, uh, approval of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion on the table? Do we have a motion?
So moved. This is Ron.
Second. Gonzalez.
I have a motion by the mayor. We have a second by Ms. Gonzalez. Do we have any comments or questions?
Yes, what are we voting on?
Approval of the consent agenda, the minutes of the special board meeting on two five, twenty, twenty-one, the minutes of the regular board meeting held on two twenty-two, uh, twenty twenty-one, the payment of the city of San Antonio, and the employee benefit oversight statement of government update, uh, Paul Bonner. Uh, I, I do have a question, uh, concerning, uh, public comments, where, uh, if you look under that on page fourteen on the public comments, it says, uh, that Chair Mackey announced that the public comments would be taken and outlined, uh, the guidelines for doing so. I, 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 you know, uh, in the past, it's, it's said that announcing for public comments would be taken and outlined and the guidelines for making public comments. And I, I don't understand because I did not make the outline, the comments about the outline that, that was done by Ivan the first time and Taylor the next to, next time. So that wasn't me to, to do that on that, that public comment.
That, uh, that is on page fourteen in the board book, and, uh, February twenty-second, we can modify the board minutes to reflect that.
Yes, and, and it's, it's white. If you look at it again, um, it happened again. So, um, if we could make the necessary corrections on that right there, I sure appreciate it.
We will do that in every, in each instance. Thank you, Dr. Mackey, for that correction.
Okay. Okay. Do we have any, uh, comments on this? If not, Ms. Ms., uh, Sheldon, if you could call roll.
Yes, sir. Uh, again, we're voting on all the consent item agendas with two, with corrections made in two instances to the minutes, as Dr. Mackey described. Um, Mr. Steen?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nuremberg?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
The items are approved.
Thank you, Ms. Sheldon. If we could move to our record agenda, uh, smart SA data sharing processes and principles by, and at this time, we have Amelia and Melissa will make the presentations on that.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees. My name is Amelia Batters, and I am the Director of Enterprise Advanced Analytics, and I'll be presenting today with Melissa Sorola, the Senior Director of Corporate Communications and Marketing, on the smart SA data sharing processes and principles. If you'll move to PDF page sixty-two, please. The objectives for this presentation include sharing the intent and construct of the smart SA inter-local data sharing agreement, abbreviated IDSA, sharing the guiding principles that we are applying at CPS Energy to ensure a customer-centric view on privacy, providing a summary of our awareness campaign, and at the end of this presentation, we will seek delegation of authority to join the IDSA. Moving on to PDF page sixty-three, the agenda that you'll see will cover a little bit of background, the steps we've taken to protect customer privacy, our customer awareness plans, and then seek delegation of authority. Moving on to PDF page sixty-four. As with everything that we do here at CPS Energy, we start with our guiding pillars and foundations. As we approach joining the inter-local data sharing agreement, we are focused on the security pillar and ensuring customer privacy is protected. Moving on to PDF slide sixty-five. Here we provide a little background of our role in smart SA. The inter-local data sharing agreement is one of many ways that we support smart SA. Our multifaceted ro- role is identified on the left-hand side of this slide on PDF page sixty-five. We're focused today on the part in the orange box, sharing data appropriately between municipal partners. On the right-hand side of the box are the other parties to the agreement for awareness of who will be joining this, um, data sharing agreement with if the board approves. Moving on to, um, PDF page sixty-six, our journey to date. As you'll see, we've been on this journey for a little while now, and I want to call out in particular our interactions with the Board of Trustees, uh, uh, Technology and Innovation Committee member, committee members, um, Trust, um, Chair Dr. Mackey and, um, and Vice Chair, uh, Trustee Gonzalez, who sit on the TNI Committee. Um, as you'll see, we've met with them several times, and I want to thank them for their engagement, for their contributions and challenges that have, um, significantly improved the way that we have approached this agreement to bring us to the point that we are at today. Their feedback has been incorporated to address particularly customer privacy and data security concerns. Moving on to PDF page sixty-seven. Here are the key attributes of the inter-local data sharing agreement. And we show here both what the agreement does not do and what it does do. The agreement does not compel parties to this agreement to share data, nor does it give any parties to this agreement special rights or grounds to demand data. What it does do is establish a common framework for requesting data. It requires each of the parties to the agreement to establish a single point of contact within each organization through which all data requests will flow. It provides a common set of terms and conditions all parties are expected to adhere to in requesting, receiving, and using data. And that includes specifying the intended use of the data and requesting authorization if you want to use data you've already received for a different use than what was originally provided. Please move to PDF slide sixty-eight. In this slide, we just provide a few illustrative examples of data we will share under this agreement and data we would not share under this agreement. Data we would share can include things like aggregate statistics by zip code to help us and our partners identify gaps in service and target awareness efforts. Another example would be data associated with initiatives within the smart San Antonio innovation zones, such, such as the smart streetlight pilot that we're involved in now as a part of the smart SA initiatives. I want to emphasize the data we would not share. We will not share customer personally identifiable information, nor will we, nor will we share any individual account information for any information deemed competitive by statute, just as a few examples. Moving on to PDF slide sixty-nine. In order to make it very clear with our partners and parties to, the, the parties to this agreement, CPS Energy approached, approached the party, um, with our specific attachment. The purpose of this attachment was to document our commitment to customer privacy as well as incorporate some specified incremental data security requirements that we felt were important. The partners have agreed to this addition of our specific attachment, and that is a large part of what brings us here today. I want to now pass the presentation, um, to Melissa Sorola, our Senior Director of Corporate Communications and Marketing, to speak about our customer awareness campaign. Thank you, Amelia. Good afternoon, Board of Trustees. As Amelia mentioned, customer awareness will be an ongoing component of these efforts. But we do see this as an opportunity to reaffirm that privacy commitment to our customers while we understand the benefits of why we are doing that. A, a couple of benefits that we will continue to communicate is this is another way for us to learn more about customer preferences, to better serve them, and possibly introduce new products and services in the future. As Amelia mentioned, our smart SA partnership demonstrates collaborative efforts that bring collective value to all of our customers. And through these efforts, it's going to be very important for us to reaffirm that we will always put customer privacy and data protection first, as that aligns with our guiding pillars, and in particular, our security pillars. As Amelia mentioned earlier, explaining what the IDSA does and does not do, and what data we would and would not share will be key, and key to this also, that this communication is going to be ongoing. If you could please turn to PDF page seventy-one. There are multiple ways we're going to create awareness for this commitment through our marketing and communications efforts, our partnership with smart SA lends to natural cross-promotional and supportive each other's work. In fact, in, in December, you may remember, we shared a collaborative announcement that highlighted our smart, our streetlight sensor pilot with the city, with ATN, Itron, and we did that on a global scale. We'll continue to look for opportunities to create that awareness. And we're also going to continue to engage in thought leadership opportunities related to smart cities. And we utilize our additional communications methods with, uh, direct communication to our customers and through media.
and through media outreach as well on ongoing basis. Another key, uh, component of this campaign and is part of our ongoing efforts already, in, in particular, related to customer security and the protection of our customers is scam awareness. This is something that we'll continue to incorporate throughout the year and will be highlighted during the times when we do talk about data sharing publicly. Additionally, all of our materials will be developed in English and Spanish, and employee communication is also going to be a part of this work. We will make sure to keep you, to continue to keep you updated on our efforts. And if you could please turn to PDF, page seventy-two, I will turn it back to Amelia.
Thank you, Melissa. I want to cover one last slide, and that is how we focus on privacy through processes that ensure customer privacy remains a top priority to any Smart SA data sharing. You'll see here is an example that when a data request comes in, on the left-hand side, um, it first goes for review. The data request will go to the IDSA Information Coordinator, which here at CPS Energy is, is me, um, Amelia Batters. And when that request comes in, it will then be reviewed by a cross-functional team of leaders made up of folks from legal services, IT security, customer engagement, and compliance to determine whether the request will be fulfilled as requested, modified, or, or not fulfilled because it, it didn't meet the, the requirement. There will also be regular reporting to the senior leadership and reporting to the Board of Trustees that will document the requests we've received and how we've responded to them. And for any data that we do share with any of our partners under this agreement, there, there is an audit plan, um, that will, that will be shared with that party when we share the data. And, anyway, there's an audit plan, and the compliance, the audit will be for compliance to our attachment, compliance to the IDSA as a whole, as well as ensuring as a part of the IDSA that they are complying with the intended use of the agreement. So with the adoption of the CPS Energy specific attachment and these processes and policies, if we'll turn to PDF, page seventy-three. It brings us to the place to respectfully request that you authorize our President and CEO or her designees to join the Smart SA Interlocal Data Sharing Agreement. Thank you. That's the end of my presentation.
Uh, thank, uh, thank you for the Smart Data here, St. Sharing Processes and Principles. Amelia and Melissa, at this time, do we have a motion before we discuss it as a board?
I have a motion. This is Trustee Gonzalez, a motion to discuss the item.
Okay, and do we have a second?
A second.
Okay.
Just for clarification, it's a motion on the actual item, right? Not, not to discuss it, is that correct?
No, it's, it's a motion on the item, and then it's a second, and then we'll discuss it.
Okay.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have a motion about Ms. Gonzalez, we have a second about Mr. Kelly. Now the floor is open for questions and comments.
Um, this is Trustee, Trustee Gonzalez. First of all, thank you. I know we've been working on this for, God, a year, a little bit over a year already. Um, so thank you for the hard work. I think the only thing that wasn't clear, uh, do we have anything in regards to, uh, the information being sold or used by third-party consultants that we have?
Um, this is Amelia. I, I believe I understand the question relative to the interlocal data sharing agreement with our municipal partners. Um, to this agreement, um, I, I, I'm trying, I don't think, um, this agreement-
Like, for example-
...is not sharing that information.
Okay, can you answer the latter part, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, um, Trustee Gonzalez, or Vice Chair Gonzalez. Um, this agreement doesn't, uh, doesn't include the sharing of, of third-party information. Our Board of Trustees' information, customer information, privacy policy clearly states that we will not sell data to anyone, um, customer data to anyone. And so that policy is adopted into this agreement as a part of the CPS Energy specific attachment.
Okay. I, I probably have a question, so, so I guess, not too long ago, and I don't want to, I, I know there's just so much to discuss, um, never mind. I, I will table my question and I'll follow up later. But I, I'm in, in favor of moving forward as written.
Vice Chair Gonzalez, to your point, um, I, I do want to add, and we, we'll be ready to talk to, about it more in the future, but I do want to add, the other party has to tell us what the intention of is, and it has to be used for that purpose. And that's, to your point, the reason why we waited so long. So, so we will not violate our own policy, and we'll be looking for, this is not supposed to be taken and monetized by other entities because we do not do that.
And, and I thank you for, I think you know where I'm leading with this. I guess I don't see the word monetized in here, and so it kind of, it might leave it a li- a little open-ended.
We did not, to your point, we did not specifically say it. To Amelia's point, we, we have a policy not to share or sell our information like that for, for, for others to make profit off of.
Well, but I guess that's why I'm asking that question because I know that sometimes when you call the help desk, sometimes they'll ask, well, do you have internet access? And, you know, who's your internet provider? And so I just want to make sure that whoever we outsource understands that we don't lead them into a service. And so I go back to the monetized component of it.
You know, that's a good point. We, we'll go back and look at those, um, services that connect to us and make sure they understand our policy, and we can also-
Yeah.
-go back and look at that wording.
Yeah, and I, I guess what I'm saying is I know that it's at a, at a macro level, it's already incorporated at a higher level. I just want to make sure that it is clear with whatever that we do, whether it's at the help desk or within it, that we make it clear that we don't monetize or, or suggest, uh, providers, solution providers in any way.
Yes, ma'am. We, we'll, we'll go back and just re-verify our processes on that.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
We have any, any other questions or comments from board members?
Uh, I, I have a, a, just a clarification. So which committee that, that was this, um, screened with?
The technology committee, the innovation and technology that falls under the risk, I believe, sir. Operational risk.
Well, good. Uh, Trustee Gonzalez, thank you so much for sharing that and, uh, also for bringing, that's, that's very valuable to, to the board that you brought your, your expertise in this area to the board. And thank you, Dr. Mackie, for participating in it, and I'll call the question.
Okay, uh, at this time, does Mr. Steen call the question? At this time, uh, would Ms., uh, Ms. Shelman, would you please, um?
I will, I will call the board on their votes on this. Um, Mr. Steen?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nurenberg?
Yes.
Dr. Mackie?
Yes.
The motion passes, the resolution will be adopted.
And I'd like to thank them, and that, uh, that, that committee, they did a wonderful job. Just great people to work with, so we appreciate that, and Ms. Gonzalez's leadership. Uh, next, we have the, uh, number nine, the Rate Advisory Committee, RAC, uh-
Good afternoon, Chairman Mackie and, uh, members of the board. Uh, I'm pleased today to provide the board an update on the Rate Advisory Committee. There's been a lot of work that's gone in that I'd like to run by you as the customer engagement lead for, uh, the leadership team on this. If you will follow me to page seventy-nine, PDF page seventy-nine, we're going to talk about the progress we've made on the RAC and allow the board discussion and alignment on, uh, next steps. Uh, PDF page eighty. The agenda today, I'm going to go over the timeline of where we are in the process and where we're going, uh, give you an overview, uh, in the, in the aggregate of the application process and the number of applicants we received, and discuss some of the bylaws updates that we've been tracking uh, as we've gotten feedback from our trustees on this issue. On PDF slide, uh, page eighty-one, the, we, we extended, the highlighted box, we've extended the, uh, application process through March twelfth to count for the, uh, the February winter event. That, uh, application process is closed. We then delivered packets to the City Council on, uh, March twenty-third. We have already received three responses of nominees, uh, from a few of the council members. So I, I very much appreciate the, uh, proactiveness in responding to our request. The process for council would end, uh, or the selections would be due by March thirty-first, which is this Wednesday, and we are actively engaging council members, uh, on this request. We will then, we will then turn around and deliver, uh, packets to the board by April ninth. That will include, um, some, uh, staff recommendations we'll go through and make some recommendations on, based on what we see in terms of the demographics that we've talked about and the diversity that we've talked about trying to achieve as we make these, uh, as, as the board make, considers these appointments. There is a special board meeting, uh, at least in the planning, uh, stages, uh, for, uh, consideration of, of the, and discussion of the board members. And our hope is that the board would vote on, uh, nominating the full body of the, of the Rate Advisor Committee along with naming the Chair and Vice Chair at that May twenty-fourth board meeting. If you follow me to PDF slide eighty-two. We really did receive quite a response from the community on this process. Two hundred and eighty applications were received through, uh, both electro- mainly electronically, but we also received some via email and got a few, uh, that were mailed to us. So we really appreciate the fact that customers, uh, responded through multiple methods. If you follow me to PDF, page eighty-three. This is a distribution of the applications by council district and as well as listing out those that came from outside the city of San Antonio. We did receive a number of applications, uh, from, mainly from District Eight and Nine, also, uh, District Ten was well represented. And then we did receive approximately thirty-one percent, give or take, uh, from outside the city of San Antonio. PDF, page eighty-four. The demographics in terms of the backgrounds, we did receive a very diverse cross-section of the community, community in terms of, of the backgrounds that the potential, uh, RAC participants bring to the table. So it was very, uh, very good to see that. And if you join me on PDF, page eighty-five, that's just, uh, represents the diversity. The majority are non-minority males, but we did receive, uh, uh, very diverse, uh, you know, backgrounds from, from across the community. Uh, we did have, uh, you know, again, I, I did want to point out that, you know, almost thirty-one percent were from outside the city of San Antonio, so we do have geographic diversity represented as well. Moving on to, uh, the bylaw, the bylaws updates, there are a number of issues that the board has discussed leading up to today. Uh, certainly one is the, uh, updating the bylaws for select a Chair and a Vice Chair, and also to reflect two-year terms as opposed to, uh, just an annual term. Excuse me. If you move on to PDF, page eighty-seven, we're also, uh, gonna clarify in our bylaws, uh, the fact that, that members must be customers, which by their very nature would reside in our service territory. And then we, we also have a request to align the RAC bylaws with the CAC, with the CAC bylaws to ensure that council appointees are district residents within each of those council boundaries. So if you move on to PDF, slide eighty-eight, um, we wouldn't be representing, uh, presenting formal bylaw changes, uh, in the coming month. We can handle that both at, at the special work session or any of the upcoming two, uh, regular board meetings, but we will present, uh, full bylaw changes, uh, to you in the coming months that will include these and any other changes that, uh, you would like to see made, uh, you know, from the board, uh, as well. And so finally, uh, that represents the, uh, the, the, uh, our, our update for today, and I would like to, um, open up the conversation to the board for discussion.
At this time, we have any questions from the board?
Yeah, uh, Chairman, just one comment.
Yes, sir, mayor.
Um, I would just say that, um, we should, we should get the, any changes to the bylaws ought to be done by the next meeting, um, so that we're not trying to do that while we're also putting together the RAC because the, the, the bylaws refer to the membership and the structure of the RAC, and that, we could find ourselves in a little bit of a quagmire with the bylaws if they aren't done before the RAC is assembled. So if, uh, my request would be, let's finalize those bylaw changes by next meeting.
Uh, and this is, uh, Trustee Gonzalez, and I would agree with that. I also don't want to delay, um, reviewing applicants. Um, so I concur with the mayor's suggestion.
Okay, well, Ms., uh, Ms. Gonzalez, can you get with me on that? And we can come up with a date or something so we can get the bylaws approved?
Uh, well, shouldn't we share those bylaws first with the entire board before we get them approved?
Send them to the board, and let the board respond, and then we can set up a date.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the entire board-
Yeah, absolutely.
-gets to review, especially since there's a lot of experts on bylaws.
Yeah, send it to all the board members, and make sure attorney reviews it, and, uh-
Okay.
And we can come up with a date that we can do this because, uh, if, if this needs to be done before we, uh, start with the, uh, uh, voting on the individuals. So if this is the first-
Okay.
Kelly, this is the first thing we should do?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Does that require a vote, Ms. Ms. Shelman?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
Okay. Can we? I'm sorry?
Once you see, you, you have the bylaws, would that, would that be sent to all board members?
I'm sorry, sir, can you repeat that again?
Will, will the bylaws be, uh, sent to all board members to update?
Yes, they will. Rudy, can you send the bylaws to, to all the board members and proposed changes?
Yes, ma'am. What we can do is go ahead and send the original bylaws as discussed with red lines showing you the changes that have been proposed so that the board knows exactly what we're, what we plan to do. Yes, ma'am.
And make sure the city office gets that information as well. The mayor's office.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Would that suffice for all the board members? Uh, Mr. Steen and Kelly, would that suffice? I guess not. Okay, so that would, that would be, Rudy, if you can support me with that, make sure everybody gets them, and then that way we can go ahead and move forward to, to be able to vote on those. And they meet it in the future. Uh-huh.
Some clarity on this? Okay, once the bylaws are done, I, I'm looking at this, and it says we have to have a special meeting?
Mm-hmm.
And what is this special meeting for again?
Rudy?
Chair Dr. Mackie, the special meeting really would be to start a dialogue on, uh, the review of the applicants. So that we wanted, uh, the board members to be able to do that outside of, of a regular board meeting so they could, uh, focus in a special work session on, on the Rate Advisory Committee.
We'll, we'll get to that, Ms. Myers, on the, the board meeting so we can cover this with trustee's work session. Uh, thank, thank you. Thank you, uh, uh, Mr. Gonzalez. Uh, any other question or comments about number nine, uh, Rate Advisory Committee, RAC?
I do. So Rudy, can you again clarify how many, uh, female applicants responded?
Okay. Are you asking the number of female applicants?
Yeah, because you have the number of fifty, seventy percent are males, and then fifty-three are non-minority. So how many female applicants?
Out of two hundred and eighty, uh, I believe it's going to be right around, uh, eighty-four were female.
So percentage-wise?
Thirty percent, ma'am.
Okay, well, at least, um, I just want to make sure as, as we're looking for members that were diverse in, in, um, in participants, that's all I'm going to stress. I don't think there's a need, I don't want to delay it, but at, at least we have thirty percent. I just want to make sure that there's diversity on the board.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Uh, at this time, uh, if there's no more, no other questions or comments, we'll move to item number ten, uh, the Flex Power Bundle, RFP, discuss, uh, it's a Kevin Polo.
Thank you. My name is Kevin Polo. I'm the interim Vice President for Energy Supply and Market Operations, uh, and I'm glad to be in front of the trustees today to talk to you about our Flex Power Bundle Request for Proposal, or RFP. I realize it's been a couple of months since we- I realize it's been a couple of months since we've been in front of you to give you an update, but I'm very excited today to share some of the initial insights from the RFP process. We can turn to PDF page ninety-one, and my main objective for today's discussion will be to provide a preview of what we saw and what we're seeing from the RFP. As we turn to PDF page ninety-two, you know, I'll cover, to accomplish that objective, cover a review of our RFP milestones and components, talk about our global response that we received, mention supplier diversity, talk about resource diversity considerations, and finally finish with a brief discussion on our community and stakeholder engagement processes. We turn to PDF page ninety-three, very excited to say, the key takeaway I think on this slide is at the top of the page, but very excited to say that our Flex Power Bundle RFP received the hot, excuse me, the highest number of registered companies for an event in our platform providers' history. So, I think that is, you know, very indicative, that strong response is very indicative of, I think, the industry, how the industry is viewing our request for proposal and our Flex Power Bundle project. Again, as we've talked about in prior meetings, the approach we're taking with bundling these technologies together, I think is a very unique approach. I think the number of companies that registered and showed an interest in that proposal is a strong sign of how the industry is viewing our approach. I think it's also a, a strong indication of how potential participants or potential partners, you know, view doing business with, with CPS Energy and particularly the city of San Antonio. So, we received over three hundred different entities that responded or registered as part of this process. We turn to PDF page ninety-four, again, just a quick review of the different elements of our Flex Power Bundle. We are seeking up to nine hundred megawatts of solar, up to fifty megawatts of storage, and up to five hundred megawatts of firming capacity. I think one of the, the key things, and I think you've heard it in several meetings recently from our president and CEO, Paula Gold Williams, but I think each of the, there's no perfect solution if you go in terms of the different fuel type. We've seen challenges with all of our fuel types, even the winter weather event from last month showed that, that, and no fuel type we had was exempt, if you will, from the challenges of that event. And so I think in light of that, that we don't have, you know, a perfect solution from a single resource type. Our view has been that we create more value for our, our customers ultimately through the bundling of these different technologies, including renewables and storage and our firming capacity. As Paula mentioned in her CEO report at the beginning of this meeting, I think the makeup of this initial Flex Power Bundle is focused on addressing a summer peak need and replacement of some of our aging gas steam capacities, so again, a very specific need. I think as we look towards, you know, our long-range flexible path journey, I echo Paula's comment that the makeup of future Flex Power Bundles may be different. You know, we'll have different needs based on maybe the capacity that we're trying to replace as we look towards planning for a winter peak, for example. How we ultimately bundle the different components in future bundles may be very different. And in future approaches, we may be more heavily weighted, for example, towards firming capacity that may align well, you know, with how we're planning for future winter peaks, for example. On PDF page ninety-five, I wanted to show a quick comparison of the response that we received from our request for information last summer to the, to the RFP. You know, both did receive strong global interest. I think it's very interesting to note that the RFP received more than triple the number of proposals than we saw during the RFI period. And so that's much higher than we anticipated based on, on the RFI responses. You know, I think we're very happy with that, however, and we welcome the challenge to work through the evaluation of that larger number of proposals. As we turn to PDF page ninety-six, you saw a similar view of this with, with the RFI responses, but I think it is, it has been our approach to think global and apply local. You know, we saw about a hundred different companies that submitted those six hundred and fifty unique proposals, and as you can see from the map here, those proposals did come from really across the globe in terms of offering to provide us solutions and how we will move forward with Flex Power Bundle. On PDF page ninety-seven, I'm showing a quick summary of the mix of diverse respondents that participated in our RFP. I think we did get nearly three-fourths of the companies that responded fit into one of these diverse categories that are shown on the slide, and that's something that we'll be very interested in as we move forward in the evaluation process. Turning to PDF page ninety-eight, again, just to show another way of the staggering response that we received, again, the six hundred and fifty proposals, but they totaled nearly forty-three thousand megawatts of capacity. So, again, I think an extremely encouraging response to the RFP. You know, this, this map here of the state of Texas also shows that we received proposals really across the state. You know, the highest percentage is concentrated in and around the San Antonio metro areas. I think that's very encouraging, but we did also see different proposals from across the different corners of the state, so not just isolated, for example, or concentrated in West Texas, for example, but, and we're seeing the diversity in the locations in which people are offering those projects. Again, very encouraging, in my opinion. On PDF page ninety-nine, I wanted to touch a little bit on, on some different diversity considerations in terms of our portfolio. And I think one of the strengths of our generation portfolio over the years has been a diverse resource mix that we have had. We've been able to rely on a number of different fuel types, you know, which does help to mitigate the risks associated with any single fuel, for example. And much the same way, I think the resource diversity that we are seeing in the Flex Power Bundle response, it will help enable a smooth transition to reduced carbon emissions while we're also able to provide affordable, reliable, and environmentally responsible energy. Now, some of those diversity considerations I've shown here on the slide, but again, it ties back to, to the map I showed on the previous slide, where we're seeing projects, you know, from across the state, for example, in, in different sizes, different, different, you know, different technologies, for example, in the firming area. So, all in all, I think that the diversity of projects that we saw, have seen in their response is very encouraging. On PDF page one hundred, this timeline has been shown to the board in previous meetings. You know, I think we said from the beginning that we may need some flexibility on the timeline based on the volume of responses. As I mentioned on earlier slides, the number of responses that we did receive really was quite, quite staggering compared to what we were expecting. I think it's a wonderful challenge to have, but nonetheless, it is something we'll have to work through as, as we try to meet our timelines here. We are looking at, you know, a couple of phased milestones, if you will. We're still looking to award some, what we're calling prioritized solar, but some projects that we will be able to award here, hopefully, in the springtime before we get through the full bundle. We are expecting with our current timeline that we'll be able to narrow those prioritized solar projects and invite the potential counterparties into negotiations by the end of April and then work through those, that negotiation process with each of the companies individually. We're still showing on this view, you know, to have all the contracts awarded by the end of July, but I think we're still working diligently with our timeline and I think we still will have a challenge in, in meeting that, again, partly because of the, the large volume of responses, but also as we work through, particularly with the firming capacity and some of the new technologies that were presented to us, we want to make sure that we're able to perform, you know, very good due diligence processes and work to make our final selections. On PDF page one oh one, a little bit more information on, on this, the project timeline and specifically the prioritized solar, but from what we're looking at is potential selections in that prioritized solar category is potentially up to about two hundred megawatts of, of large, you know, transmission scale solar. We're also targeting to have at least a, a local project included in that prioritized category. I think that'll be, just due to the size of the project, for example, it'll be a smaller quantity. You know, I've talked, you know, a bit about some of the challenges that we faced, also wanted to talk about high, you know, opportunities. As part of the RFP, we did send out standard draft power purchase agreements. So, we think that depending on, on the counterparties that, that we may look at or that will get shortlisted, if you will, from the prioritized solar category, that those that have taken, you know, fewer exceptions, fewer red lines to our draft power purchase agreement will certainly help to expedite the negotiation process, to help us work through that more quickly in some cases. Obviously, as we're able to award the local projects, we see potential progress in, in our shining cities rankings. Now, from the challenge perspective, I've talked a couple of different times about the number of responses it received, so I think it is a challenge for us to work through, but again, I think it's a very good problem for us to have, so to speak, that we have, that we had a robust response to the RFP that we saw, and certainly we had hoped to see that type of strong response and it exceeded our expectations. The second bullet there, we did see some impact from the, the winter weather event last month as we, we did have some resources that we redirected temporarily to help address the, the impact of the storm, but we are continuing to work through and bring everything back together. On PDF page one oh two, I wanted to touch base again a little bit on, on the shining cities progress. Again, if you look at the bottom left, the current rankings, you know, we were number five. You see not too far behind, if you will, numbers three and four. So, we think that moving up the page to the, the top left there, if we are able to award, you know, up to ten to thirty megawatts as part of this prioritized solar, that could move us, you know, even just nineteen megawatts, if you will, moves us, would move us into fourth place. And again, I just want to emphasize, that is for the prioritized solar. We do fully expect, as we work through the full Flex Power Bundle, that that will include additional local solar. So, again, I think we have more opportunity overall as, as we get through the full bundle to see potential additional progress in terms of the shining cities rankings. On PDF page one oh three, I just wanted to show a couple highlights again of some of the, the communications outreach and stakeholder engagement. We've participated in various industry forums. We, we've hosted, for example, our own TeleTown Hall there that's shown on, on the right side of the, of the page. So, again, we, we hope to continue to engage our community and the industry as well as we work through the remainder of our Flex Power Bundle evaluation process and look to move towards ultimately awarding and partnering with the entities that we believe will help deliver the most value to our community. And finally, on PDF page one oh four, I just wanted to close again with touching on our guiding pillars, our six pillars that are built on our, on our foundation of being financially responsible, you know, and make the, the final comment that all of the decisions that we will make as part of the Flex Power Bundle evaluation process will be based on that commitment to being, to meeting these six pillars and remaining, you know, financially responsible. And with that, I'll be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
This is Trustee Gonzalez. I do have a question regarding, are we taking into consideration and maybe, I'm sure you've, you guys have thought about this, knowing that we're getting bids from other countries, how are we going to address the supply chain risk to incorporating or utilizing companies out of the country with cyber threats and knowing the history of that?
I, I think that's an excellent question of Vice Chair Gonzalez, and I think that we are incorporating into our, our evaluation process, you know, security concerns, as you mentioned, with cybersecurity and other areas, so it is part of our process. You know, I think it will be part of, you know, as we work to, it'll be part of the evaluation process as we go through and as we get to shortlisting companies, if, if any of those top candidates or, or from a different country, for example, I think that has to be part of how we're ultimately evaluating and negotiating our power purchase agreement to make sure that we have the, the right protections in those agreements.
Hey, Chairman, if I could?
Yes, go ahead.
Ma'am? If I can just jump in a, a little bit. Yes, so a couple of things we've done so far is before we ever launched the, the whole RFP internationally, we went through and our, our immigrated security team under Shannon Ramirez and Fred Bonnywell made sure that we looked at the countries that we were pursuing. And from the very, very beginning of the event and, and currently actively participating in the process, we have Shannon and her team watching the steps and the progress and how we're making decisions and looking at those issues on, on the technical side. And we also have, under Lisa Lewis, we have the supply chain group looking at those actual value stream issues as well. And I would, last I'd say, we have the financial services group that, that set up to do counterparty evaluations to look at these different companies that were very interested, that are rising to the top. So, it's a very fluid process, ma'am, and we can spend some more time with TNI Committee and you, because it's, it's one of those things that in our, you know, six pillars, you're right, we have to make sure before we make those decisions that we, we close the loop on all those things, but because of your feedback, we set those streams up so far.
Well, I appreciate that, and, and again, I, I'm not sure this falls under the risk operations, but it would be nice if all colleagues were, you know, if all of the board of directors were kind of brief on what, what exactly does that supply chain mean? Like, how does it affect our decision-making? Because these are going to be fairly large efforts as well as, again, I'm going, knowing, knowing the industry a little bit, most likely would be, some of these companies may most likely be out of the country. And so I think it's important that we do spend some good amount of time for all board members to understand what that means, and, and so I would appreciate that. My other question, and thank you, Paula, for sharing that. My other question would be more from a procurement standpoint. So, I'm happy to see the chart on, I think for me, it's slide A, to see the diverse mix. Is part of our recruitment strategy in some cases, are we going to be open to like joint ventures or we're going to be strictly, would that be considered, I guess is really my question, joint ventures?
I think that's a really good?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
I'm sorry, Trustee. No, I was just, I think that's a really good question. From the projects that we have, I think we've seen different partnerships where, where entities have partnered together to make the full proposal. And so I think we, we have that built into some of the responses we've already received, received, excuse me. You know, as far as additional opportunities to, for joint ventures or, or things, I think that is something we, we can take into consideration, again, as we talk to some of our shortlisted counterparties as we get to that part of the, of the evaluation process.
Or maybe one of the things you might want to consider ahead of time would be where it would make more sense and which, which, which procurement items where that would mean more sense. So, just off the, you know, just, just my, my thought would be, okay, if it's a big-ticket item, multi-year, or it's a company out of a country that doesn't have a local office. And so it would be nice if you guys could start working on some of those strategies if it's applicable. Again, you guys have thought of everything, I just want to make sure that if we do consider that, where does it make more sense? With what items would it make more sense? If you guys can kind of just research that and come up with some recommendations.
You know, Vice Chair Gonzalez, I will say, I, you know, we haven't worked out all the details, but it has seemed to us instinctively that the solar side of the entire project is going to be the easiest place to create the synergies because you have local installers and people who are already in our New Energy Economy Network and those that are really interested, but we're gonna, we're gonna take your question and just challenge ourselves that we're looking?
No, yeah, and I mean, but that's a perfect example where it makes sense, we should try to do it. Where it's a little bit tougher than, you know, but I guess if we're all on the same pace and it's easier for us not to, again, delay votes, be able to be supportive, and I think, again, stimulate the local economy is very important, especially after what we're, with the COVID and everything we've experienced. And so, any opportunity that we have to do that, I would appreciate just, again, the procurement team to, to be ahead of it where it makes sense. Thank you. And those are my, my only two comments. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, thank you, Trustee Gonzalez. Do we have any other questions before we go into closed session?
This is Trustee Kelly. I do have a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Kelly.
Yes. Mr. Polo, if you would turn to PDF ninety-four.
Yes, sir.
What kind of firm yield do you expect to get out of your nine hundred megawatts of solar?
So, from a, a firm yield, sir, I, I would answer your question as, or interpret your question as, you know, what we plan for, if you will. And with solar, what we plan for as far as being?
And with solar, what we plan for as far as being able to meet our summer peak obligation is about 50%. That's where, you know, our peak in San Antonio is a little later in the evening, about six o'clock or so. And so we expect our historical numbers from the solar projects that we have, so about 50% of our, of the nameplate capacity, the total capacity is actually producing at that time of the evening.
So that was the number that I hear a lot is 40 to 50% firm yield by virtue of the fact that you don't get, obviously, any solar at night, you don't get any during rainstorms, you don't get any during overcast days, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm thinking you're going to get maybe 400 megawatts, maybe 450, uh, firm yield out of this, right?
Yes, sir. I think that's, I think that's a good estimate based on what we've seen with other projects, yes, sir.
So why do you need 500 megawatts of farming to back it up?
I think the farming capacity is there to help back up not only the solar, but also potentially the storage as well. You know, I think we'll see, as we saw during the winter event, that, you know, there may be opportunities where the storage is not able to, you know, produce or participate for whatever reason. And so I think the farming capacity will help on both fronts, to firm up both our storage as well as, as well as the solar.
And what type of firm yield could you expect to get out of your farming? 500?
I think the farming capacity should have a much higher firm yield, yes, sir. We expect or what we're looking for in the, in the farming capacity is what I'll term the dispatchable generation, the thing that we have more control over, so to speak, as far as wind and how much it produces.
Yeah, so my impression that farming capacity is pretty much one-to-one, capacity to actual farming. So the question that comes to my mind then, why do we need the solar at all?
Well, I think the solar and the value of the solar comes into play, I think, as we look at our total resource mix and our move, you know, from the generation fleet that we've had traditionally to the generation fleet that we envision, if you will, through our flexible path journey and in our desire overall to reduce our carbon emissions and move to a lower emitting footprint. And so I think the solar, I think, is part of that overall journey. I think it has value in our portfolio, certainly long-term. Again, I think with the farming capacity, that's one of the ways I think that we will help address some of the immediate challenges, if you will, in the intermittency of solar. We do expect, you know, storage technologies will continue to develop, and so I think as those develop in the future, I think they will pair well with the solar that we will have built into the portfolio. And so I think it's all a step in our, in our longer-term journey, sir, towards, towards our future generation fleet through the flexible path.
Mr. Polo, I'm not coming after you, but what we're really saying here is we can't depend upon solar and wind, so we have to build redundancy in the form of firm capacity, be it gas, coal, nuclear, whatever. So this is not a finance-driven decision, this is a politically-driven decision. That if I needed 400 megawatts of electricity, I would just go out and build 400 firm capacity. What we're going to do is build 900 or buy or commit to purchase or whatever, 900 megawatts of solar, and then recognizing we need 450 or so firm, we're going to go get capacity for 500 a firm. It's a dumb decision, but it is politically correct. I understand that. I am not in favor of any further solar or wind until we have very, very robust storage. When you can come to me and say, we have enough storage to carry us through any difficult plans, then you can build all the solar and wind that you want to build, because you can put it, if you don't need it, you can put it in storage and use it later. But right now, it's dumb to do that, because we are sitting on the largest gas reserves in the world. We did not get gas during the freeze, because people were too dumb to fill out a farm to say, don't turn off the electricity to our gas plants during the freeze. And so we had a constraint of gas generation. But to go out and spend double the money so that you can do what's politically correct, to me, is dumb. That's what, that's what ends up breaking companies. So what we need to do, in my opinion, is work very, very hard on storage. And if you get to where storage makes a lot of sense, then get after the solar and the wind and everything else. In the meantime, get what you need from firm generosity and from firm generation. The numbers I'm reading is that during the Great Freeze, the yield from our renewables was roughly 2%, 2%. So it simply does not make sense. Yes, we had trouble with all of our sources, but if you look at the yield from the other sources, even in the depths of the freeze, they significantly outperformed any of your renewables. So as usual, we're jumping ahead, because it's politically correct, and we're going to jump on in and spend hundreds of millions of dollars on BS when we're supposed to be in business, we're supposed to be supplying electricity to our customers, and we're paying the city $350, $400 million a year to let them be politically correct. But we're doing it both, and it just galls me to see us disguise this stuff in what is supposed to be a sense of economic viability. You need to erase that whole bottom line off of your pillars, because this has nothing to do with financial responsibility. Enough said.
Trustee, Trustee Kelly thoroughly always understands and appreciates the great points that you make. We obviously have some more work to do, we'll bring things back. I think the one thing I will say is, we learned many years ago, and I think what the storm did highlight is there's no perfect technology and that we have to stay diversified. What we also learned in this event was that there is a winter peak, of which case renewables were never supposed to be the savior for the state. And then there's a summer peak. We need, we have not just an environmental issue, but tremendous regulatory pressure coming from the fossil fuel industry. Coal performs really, really well, but the regulatory pressure on coal just isn't going to make it economical. The penalties, the potential, the potential carbon tax and fees associated with that type of technology won't really work. The capital cost on old, old technology on nuclear really doesn't merit, maybe there'll be different nuclear technologies. And to your point, we do need to continue to double and triple down on innovation and technology. The issue is, our path is not clear. We're going to have to make some left turns and right turns to use all the tools in our toolbox, but we will definitely bring this topic back to make sure we get the full wisdom on the board on the different options we're looking at.
Madam CEO, I recognize I'm preaching to the choir. I recognize I'm going against the grain of political niceties, but every now and then, when I look at your chart and see the financial responsibility supporting all of this, I kind of get the hiccups, because I know that's not true. And you know that's not true, but you can't say that, and I understand that. So just to move on, but know that at least one guy understands the charade.
We'll keep working on it, sir.
Chairman Mackey, this is Ron. I'd like to say a couple of things. Okay. I didn't know if I lost everybody or I was just, at any rate. Well, I appreciate this. Obviously, we're getting a bit behind on getting the rack established, but we do need guidance on these decisions. They're big, big decisions. But I do want to say, this shouldn't be a choice between environmental stewardship and the fiscal realities. We can have both, and the notion that we can't, I think, is one that we've already moved past a long time ago. It is clear that the Texas freeze impacted every single system that we have, and in fact, impacted coal, gas, nuclear, much more than renewables. So I'm looking forward to the discussion going forward, and I'm anxious to see the results of this RFP.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other questions? Any board members, any other questions or comments, concerns? If not, before we go into closed session, executive session, I would like to ask the board that, number one, that before Ms. Schellman takes us into executive session, that the time is, uh, 3:24, and then we, what, six minutes, 10 minutes, which one would be better? Take a look before we come back on, at, say, say 3:00, 3:35, that we come on again, and that only board members come on at 3:35, just the four board, five board members, so we can discuss the personnel issue. Then we can call the CEO to bring the rest of them on once we finish with this personnel issue. And if it's at 3:35, just, just board members, and then we'll let the CEO know to bring the rest of them on when we finish our personnel discussion. Ms. Schellman.
Mr. Chairman, can I get clarification? Are you, this is Trustee Gonzalez. Are you stating that at 3:35, we call into the executive session number, just board members, is that correct?
Board members, yes.
To that number that we have for executive session?
Executive session, yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure, at 3:35?
3:35, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Schellman.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey. At this time, the board will recess into closed session to discuss matters that have been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings law, including attorney-client matters under section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, real property under section 551.072, prospective gifts or donations under section 551.073, personnel under section 551.074, security personnel and devices under 551.076, economic development negotiations under 551.087, to deliberate vote or take final action on competitive matters under 551.086, to deliberate regarding security audits and devices under 551.089, or to deliberate under section 418.183F of the Texas Government Code about confidential information under the Texas Homeland Security Act. And the board, at the conclusion of executive session, will reconvene in open session. And it's now 3:26. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schellman. At this time, only board members at 3:35, only board members. At this time, only board members at 3:35, only board members.
Please hold while we bring the trustees back in.
The CPS Energy Board of Trustees is returning from executive session. Please hold while we bring the trustees back into the meeting. Okay, Chair Dr. Mackey, the board has reconnected.
Okay, thank you. At this time, can we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion made.
This is second by Trustee Gonzalez.
Okay, we have all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Wait, Dr. Mackey, do you want to show me where he speaks?
Yes, just a minute. We really do need to just make one announcement that the board at 5:50 concluded its executive session, has come back into open session during executive session. No matters were discussed other than those that were posted and no votes were taken. And so, we do, I believe, have a quorum. I've heard Dr. Mackey, I've heard Ms. Gonzalez. Mr. Kelly, are you still on?
Yes.
Okay, and I believe that Mayor Nuremberg and Mr. Steen are not on, correct? Okay, so we have a forum. We're back into open session and I think there is a motion that was made to adjourn. So could you repeat that motion, please?
And Jake Flint, sir, sir.
Mr. Kelly made a motion?
Yes, I made a motion that we adjourn.
I believe I heard the CEO speak before we make the motion, is that correct?
I am so sorry. I just want to confirm that you all want to push the PSC until next month.
Yes, correct.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Ms. Gonzalez, you second the motion?
Yes, after Trustee Kelly, yes, I'm seconding the motion.
A motion by Mr. Kelly, we have a second by Ms. Gonzalez. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, meeting is adjourned, thank you.